Will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Baum. Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Dr. Fellow. Dr. Mann. Ms. Wa.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Okay. The Board has a full closed-session agenda. I will read the agenda off, and then we have a couple of speakers request to address us with respect to closed-session items. But we will be moving into closed session to deal with Government Code Section 54957, Employee Appeal pursuant to 5 CCR 59336B4. Appointments/Employment of Public Employees, Vice President Administrative Services, Vice President Information Technology, Vice President Human Services, Vice President Educational Services, Vice President Student and Learning Services, and General Counsel. Also, public employee appointment, Digital Media and Music Theory, and Employee Discipline, Dismissal, Release, Perine to Employees Closed Perine. Having said that, let me invite first Katrylia Ricky McGee to come address us, please. I hope I'm pronouncing your first name correctly. If not, I apologize.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Katrylia Ricky McGee, Senior Dance Professor of the Performing and Communications Arts Division, Dance Department. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Rocha, President, Superintendent, and the Pasadena City College Area District Board of Trustees for giving me this time to address a possible appeal concerning the sexual harassment complaint I filed against Timothy Barret of Staging Services and on behalf of students enrolled in modern dance production under my direction. Mr. Barret also shared unwelcome information concerning the termination of other employees due to sexually harassing others here on our campus while at work. My complaint involves that of an unhappy and hostile work environment through the networking of the Good Old Boys Club within our college. And because I am not a member of this club, I have had mounting allegations made about me that are false throughout this investigation process. Also, the investigation was not thorough and did not give me ample time to associate my witnesses and their statements concerning my complaint. Others who have added fuel to the fire are Dean of Performing and Communications Arts Division, as well as the Events Coordinator of my division, former staging services media center supervisor, and the Pasadena City College Faculty Association Union Representative, Roger Morheim, who suggested filing a claim against me for defamation of character for Timothy Barret. I am seeking an appeal so that I can prove beyond a shadow of a doubt that these problems have occurred and will continue if something is not done. Witnesses have come forth to validate my complaints. The details of this matter are overwhelming, at best causing mental anguish, emotional discord, and physical exhaustion. These unwelcome behaviors are disruptive and disturbing for students enrolled in my classes. Least of all, my private life has been tremendously interrupted. I am in therapy and psychological counseling for all the stresses I have been through here at my workplace. Today, I hope that I am making things as articulate as I possibly can. I'd like to bring some resolve to these problems. I am prepared to hire an outside civil advocate who shall seek justice in this matter. These problems have existed as long as I have known Sex and Auditorium. And you need to know that I've been here since age 24, and that's some 33 years. And because of all of the nonsense going on in my midst, I am unable to effectively and resourcefully do the excellent work that I am capable of doing. Staging Services has created such a hostile and angry workplace while gossiping about my fellow employees, in addition to making me out to be someone I am not. I do not want my students to be victimized by Timothy Barret and the staging services crew starting fall 2011 and spring 2012. I would prefer to correct these problems within our school. Also, it is my wish that you consider the appeal in the best interest and protection of our production students who are under, again, my leadership. I thank you for taking your time to give me this opportunity to address all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next request we have is from Corinthian Bates and Denise Chavers Bates, also on a closed-session item.
Hello. Thank you for giving us this time to address you. Have you received the email preparation sent by Karen Hartman, staff's lawyer?
Members of the Board, yes, those communications have been received in my office and have been received as well as in the President's office.
Okay. Would you like a second copy just to have in hand as you go into closed session?
I appreciate your courtesy, but I think we're good.
We prepared these items especially for you to really look at and make sure that it's clear that you guys are, before any decision is made in closed hearing, that you read these documentations prepared from CSEA.
Well, if you want to hand them to, well, just give them to Mary Dowell, and she'll pass them up to...
But I was actually specifically asked by Karen Hartman to specifically hand them to the President of the College.
Okay, well, come on. He's right here. Bring him here. We'll do it that way. Very much.
Okay. So, we're here again, fighting for Corinthian's job on a matter that didn't even need to exist, a small argument between fellow coworkers in which heated words were exchanged, and the incident was turned into something that it has not been. Words in this complaint were made up, as will be shown in the affidavits that are enclosed in the packet, and we'd just like your consideration in getting him back to work as soon as possible because it's been over a year, almost a year and a half.
And there were signed declarations by myself and other people in the party in regards that the allegations that has totally been made are not even true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Anybody else to address the Board on closed-session items? If not, we will adjourn into closed session and return around 6:00. The Board of Trustees is back in session, in open session. There is no reportable action from the closed session. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask Mr. Simon Fraser, if he will lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes of our meeting number 14 of July 6, 2011. Are there any additions or corrections or questions about the minutes? Not? Would someone make a motion to approve?
Move approval?
Okay. I think Mr. Soto...
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Wa made the motion. If you wouldn't mind your...
Just have a deep voice.
...second, Ms. Brown?
Just a second.
Okay, very good. Any further questions? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is announcements and recognitions of Board of Trustees. Ms. Brown, any announcements?
No announcement today.
Mark, thank you. Mr. Baum?
I attended the Board of Governors' meeting last week, at which we approved the recommendation that restricts the number of times courses may be completed and continue to receive funding by the state. It was a little bit controversial, but I think it was the wise decision and came with the recommendation of the Chancellor. And in these difficult financial times, that is one limit that I think is a wise one for the system to take.
Ms. Wa?
I attended the Legislative Affairs Meeting in South Pasadena Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce in South Pasadena is working with PCC, Dina Chase, and we're going to be putting up a PCC booth over in our farmer's market in South Pasadena. So, the date's to be determined, but it should be happening soon.
Good. Very good. Mr. Soto?
No reports.
Okay, let's move on into Superintendent President, Dr. Rocha.
Yes, thank you, President Thompson. I do have a couple of brief announcements, and then we have a brief recognition and presentation. First one, I did want to, I didn't have my text in front of me, but we just won a trio grant. And I'd ask Dean Miller to give us the, just a quick blurb on the trio grant, and by way of announcing that, I want to thank Elaine Chapman and Nancy, I don't know if Nancy's here?
She is.
There you are, Nancy. Just, you know, great accomplishment. So, Bob, can you do a sum up on that?
I can, thank you. The bottom line, it's approximately $1.3 million, as I recall, over a five-year period of roughly $250,000 a year. It includes, it's a specialized program for seven of our district high schools, including Rosemead and other high schools in the Alamo Union High School District, I think maybe Royal, but it's basically, we have several high schools that'll be involved now that had not been involved before. It's various enhancements to the programs that we do right now in the trio area, in the area of counseling, in the area of first-year experience programs, provides some individualized instruction, I think you're going to hear tonight, from a couple of our other students who have been the beneficiaries of programs like this. And the credit really goes to Nick Mata, Student Services Team, to Nancy, to Elaine, and several others who worked very hard to make this happen.
If I may just add also to Joy Britton and to Heba Griffiths, a number of people, also Pablo Carion. And what's important about this particular trio program, as Bob has just mentioned, is it rounds out a bit of what we're already doing, and it does reach down into the middle schools. So, in addition to picking up Rosemead High School for the first time for talent search and one of these programs, we're able to now tap into our middle schools in the various districts that are affected and bring them along also. So, this is tremendous outreach, as Dean Miller has just said, to start to bring this together for the trio program, which is already a very exciting program in undertaking. So, yes, that's a great team. Great team.
No, well, congrats to all, and it's an example of what the team is doing in terms of revenue enhancement and finding the funds necessary in order to get the job done for our students. So, I did also want to just briefly turn to Dean Cynthia Olivo, who has some brief, great news about our UCLA transfer students. So, if you could just shout that out, Cynthia, I'd appreciate it. Now, this is kind of extemporaneous, but this is really remarkable news.
Can any of them play football or basketball?
I just sent Dr. Rocha a notice last night that we received word from UCLA that four of our students received a full scholarship from UCLA amidst many students from other community colleges, but we had the highest amount. So, we were very pleased and proud of them and of the hard work that is done by our counselors, as well as our faculty members who work with TAP students. It's great.
Wonderful, thank you.
And the PS to that is, is that normally, community colleges only get one or two of their students selected in any given year, and this year we got four, which is a real testament to a lot of people, our faculty, et cetera.
The third recognition that I'd like to make is, you know how important the college commitment program is, the two plus two plus two, that we've been working on all year? And now, we'd like to give you a very, very brief update on a piece of that, and a critically important piece that we call the Pathways Program. And so, the Pathways Program is the group, a cohort of, I think, 300 students that's coming in soon, and off we go.
That's right. I'd like to introduce Dr. Rhea Preciado and three of our EXL students, and they're going to do a brief presentation regarding the portal that we are setting up for the first of, our first cohort of 300 students that are going to be going through from POSD that are part of our college commitment.
So, hi, I'm Dr. Rhea Preciado. I'm a faculty member here. It's my third year on campus. I'm in the Natural Sciences, and I teach geography, and I'm the faculty lead for the Title V Grant Portal Team. And this portal is a web portal. As we all know, our first-year students, a majority of them are millennials, and they are looking for technology that's innovative, fun, and will help them jump through the myriad of hoops that college has for them. So, myself and a team have been working on a homegrown web portal that is, we will roll out August 1st to 315 students and do extensive evaluation on. I've been sitting in student-focused groups for the past two weeks, which is really enlightening. All you have to do, as you all know, is just ask the students. They'll tell you what's cool, what's not, what they want, what doesn't work, what works. And so, this is really student-driven, and there's a big student voice here. I'd like to first present some of that student voice. I have two students here who are currently in an EXL summer orientation. This orientation is, was the model for the summer orientation that these 315 Pathway students will undertake. In addition to the orientation, they'll be guaranteed classes in the fall and spring, especially those hard-to-find English and math courses. So, this is a golden ticket, essentially. So, the two students, we're going to briefly talk about their experience working in EXL for the last two weeks. First, I have Diane Perez, and secondly, I have Sarai Lomelli.
Hello, my name is Diane Perez, and I graduated from Manuel Arts High School, and that's located in South Central. So, the reason why I'm in this program, honestly, is because it guarantees me with my math and English, also with tutoring. My experience in school has always been that I always have a substitute teacher for math. So, I never really knew what was my potential in math. And with this program, I feel that my potential is growing, and I feel I can go far. Many people ask me, why do I come to PCC if I'm from downtown LA, I'm so far? It takes two hours to get to school. But I'll do it every day, as long as I know I have a future, and EXL can promise me that future. And with that help, the student portal is actually very helpful because in the PCC website, you find a lot of information that you probably don't need and you don't want to talk about, you don't want to find out, and this, I mean, it's honest. And then, the student portal just really cuts through the chase, and it answers all your questions, and, you know, it's great. And issues keep on being funded and maybe even get broader through all different community colleges. So, yeah, that's my experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarai Lomelli. I graduated from Hunter Beach High. I always wanted to go to college, but I was overwhelmed and confused of how to go about it. I'm now a part of the Summer EXL, I mean, the EXL Summer Bridge Program, and I'm really enjoying it. The EXL program is giving me direction and help when I need it. I really like the portal because it's fun and easy to use, it's convenient.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
So, very briefly, if you all want to take a look at this screen, it's unfortunately behind you, to the side of you here. This is the portal. It's called My PCC, and it's, in some ways, you know, very patriotic, right? It's Lancer Colors. And this is a personalized experience, so each student has their own individual login. Here's a sample student here, Juan, and you'll notice that the things that students need to do, like check out the schedule of classes or register for classes at Lancer Link, or check on their current grades in Blackboard. These are the things that students currently have a hard time finding. So, we're trying to make it very easy for them to do that by putting that right on front. In addition, there's several quick links on the main page to things they need to do, buy books, find jobs, get the parking permit for the first day of class, right? These simple hoops that sometimes can be really hard to navigate in the labyrinth of our college. There's also a way for students to interact and see who else is online, and they can instantly chat with them. This was a huge desire that came out of student focus groups. They want to see who's online, they want to see their teachers online, especially their teachers, and instantly chat with them and ask them about homework. If I go to the next tab here, there is an area that's personalized for them, in this case, called Juan's Place. It would be whatever your first name is when you're a student or a faculty member or an instructor logging in, and you can customize this. For example, the student Juan wants to know about PCC news, so he's added that block. He really likes ESPN NBA news, so he's added that block, right? This is a way for students to customize things, and they're not going to keep going to something on the web unless it's something that they care about. So, this is a way to customize that, bring in their Facebook feed, for example, and a way for us to push polls for them. This is an active poll that we've been running with our focus groups, and as you can see, 96% of the students currently say they would use this if given the opportunity. The next tab is Campus Life. This is a way for us to really get the student engaged in things like Lancer Radio. Many of the students didn't even know we had Lancer Radio, or to find out what the PCC Facebook feed is. I mean, this is where the millennials are, right? They're on Facebook. So, if we're not there, we're not going to be where they are. And in addition to that, we have the PCC Courier News, for example. So, this is a way for students to get engaged in campus life, clubs, the news, Lancer Radio, because we know that studies have shown if they're engaged in campus life, they're going to be more likely to reach completion, and that's why we're all here. The last two tabs, we have Success Tools. These are different tips and strategies that can help students do better and reach completion. For example, if they have test anxiety, time management issues. We've also created a repository for student forms. If you're a student here, you still have to actually come to Campus Park and get paper forms, real paper forms, which, you know, millennials don't use paper. So, we have created a repository that you can search through to get digital forms, so a student can have that PDF available to them. And this is not comprehensive yet, so if you have any form that a student needs that's on paper and can get it scanned to a PDF, we would really, really appreciate that. The last tab here that I'd like to show you is the Bulletin Board. This is a way to have the kind of old-fashioned bulletin boards where people put stickies and papers up to sell a book or learn about ride-sharing, or, for example, a room for rent. This is a way for students to interact with each other and post in this digital way. So, in conclusion, this is version 1.0. There's only, the only place we can go from here is up. This is beta. The whole point is test, 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 evaluate, 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 get student feedback. So, I'd like to open it up for any questions, comments, or concerns that you might have. One of my tech colleagues, Laura, is here as well, and she'd be more than welcome to answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Berlinda?
I do have a sort of a remark. This is excellent. I love your enthusiasm. I think the students are going to really love this. But as you were talking earlier, when we first engaged into 300 cohorts, I was under this little misconception, I thought it was going to be for the kids in the district. Did I miss something? Help me.
No, if I may respond, the 315 that Dr. Preciado referred to is the group that has been recruited 98-plus percent from POSD, from the Pasadena Unified School District. You might recall that we indicated that our pilot group was going to be POSD, and then a year from this fall, we're going to roll it out to the other district feeder high schools. So, that's what this, that's what this group is, and this portal is the tool, one of the tools, one of the many tools that these students will use, and we will test on this pilot group, and then, as Rhea indicated, this is 1.0, if you will. The other thing I'd like to add very quickly is that, just as Rhea has had a focus group of students for the last couple of weeks, for all year, there have been many focus groups with all types of campus constituents, departments, divisions, faculty, support staff, in terms of how to build this thing. Our web team has been incredible. Dr. Klein, our Teaching Learning Center, that staff, the people who have got the Title V Grant, this has been a huge campus-wide effort as we prepare for the millennials, as we prepare for the new group of students, and we work them through our system faster.
Yeah, well, the only reason I ask the question is because the students that are engaged are from South Central and from out there. So, I just need to understand.
And these two students are part of our EXL program, and I believe, Brock, this is EXL 10? EXL 10. So, for 10 years, we've had that program, and that's been the pre-courts cursor, if you will, to a lot of the work that we're doing now with a number of our first-year experience programs on campus. We just brought them here as examples. We talked about trying to get a couple of POSD students, but that program actually starts on...
It starts August 15th.
August 15th. So, but a year from now, or three months from now, whenever Dr. Rocha wants us to come back, we'll have some district students, some of the district students.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks.
Other questions? Jeff?
Well, I just, first off, thanks for the presentation. I think that it's long overdue to have this kind of tool for our students, and so I want to kind of encourage going on. I was confused, like Mrs. Brown, because I opened with a talk about pathways, and I thought there was something new that you were going to share with us about the Pathways Program. But since I have this opportunity, I'm going to share something with you about the Pathways Program, in that I'm passing along over to you a whole packet that Long Beach City College is announcing with their Pathways Program, and when ours is off the ground, it's the 2-2-2, that's with Long Beach State and the Long Beach Unified School District. And my hope is that we have a similar kind of communication, community-wide communication effort to promote the innovation that we're doing with the Pathways Program.
Absolutely. And we have now had two or three meetings with Cal State LA and our POSD partners as we develop a PCC, our college commitment, if you will, and we're looking very closely at the Long Beach model, and yes, when we have this ready, we will definitely promote it far and wide.
Other questions? Ms. Wa?
I just wanted to congratulate you. I think the portal is great, and I think you've done a really nice job. One of the questions, so right now, it's out of, it's kids who are not yet in PCC who can also go into this portal, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
Right, so in August 1st, it will be complete. All 315 students will get logins. Right now, for our focus groups, we're focus grouping with EXL, we're also giving them logins. But the general student won't have a login. They won't be able to access this resource because it's in a beta mode. We want to make sure, just like Google does, they test it before they go global. We want to make sure, just like Google does, they test it before they go global. That's our goal here, is to test it before we go global as well, to make sure that what we give to the students is really going to knock their socks off.
And this portal is, is being designed for all students at Pasadena City College. We're just starting out with this group as a pilot and as Ray indicated, it's version 1.0, so a long way to go. But we've made a lot of progress in a short period of time.
And you also asked, can a student who doesn't have a login see some of it?
If you don't have a login, for example, if I log out, you can still access the Home tab. So you still can see some of the parts of the portal, but you're not going to see all the parts of the portal. Anything that's customizable or we don't want someone on the outside adding content.
And so, since you're tuning it based on feedback that you get from the PUSD group, but you're planning on rolling it out to the rest of the PACCD, at what point will you be asking for some feedback to make sure it works for everyone, for the entire district?
All right. I don't have an exact answer for that, but I will say that soon, basically, we're going to get through the, the PUSD pilot and then we will begin to look at the other areas of the district and roll it out that way. But the truth of the matter is if it works for this group of students, it should work for just about any of our students. So it'll, it should be ready. Would you agree?
Right. And Ms. Wong, the background story, so we've been working on this for a year and we haven't been asking PUSD students solely this for a year. We've been asking the students we happen to have on hand who are on the campus. And we've been modeling after best practices and going to conferences. And so it, it has been created, really, with getting feedback from everybody. We're going to do the detailed evaluation, starting in the fall, with the 315 who are PUSD primarily, though.
And Rhea, would you scroll down to the bottom of this page?
Sure.
You see all of the, the social network connections, basically the Facebook and the blogs and the RSS, the Twitters and what have you. This is designed so that the students can get into any means of social media communication that they want to get into and link back and forth. So the whole idea is when students come to Pasadena City College and they want to know anything about it, they're not going to go to Pasadena.edu, they're going to go to their website. And there are other colleges that have been successful at this, that this is what students do. They get up in the morning, the first thing they do is they go online to their, to their college page. And that's what we want them to do.
And then just one little technical feedback. So you're going to allow people to, the students, to get electronic forms and so will you also then have an editor that allows them to fill the forms out online and submit them or?
Well, it's 1.0. And, and quite frankly, we've had a hard time just getting forms digital. So our goal for the first pass 1.0 is to get as many forms digital in a PDF version as possible, but then quite frankly, for 1.5 or 2.0, that's the way to do it. Yep, you bet.
And when we get to our Enterprise Resource Plan and we get that going and our new VP of Information Technology, that, getting ourselves online and digital is going to be one of the high priorities because we're just not there yet. So it's, it's a task, but we're getting there. We're making progress.
Thank you.
But you're, you're thinking on our page.
Yeah.
I just want to give one quick shout-out to my fellow Huntington Beach High School graduate because I'm a, I'm an Euler as well and I was glad to see you too.
We won't hold that against hers. Thank you very, very much. That was terrific. Good job.
In closing, I would want to thank Rhea and the students for coming tonight. We did want to show the trustees the progress that we're making on the Student Access and Success Initiative funding that you approved 10 months ago. So this program within the Pathways, these are, the 300 students or so that are coming in, didn't exist last year. The preponderance of them are from in district, but this program and the 12th graders that are coming in, in this learning cohorted community, it simply did not exist here. So having this, you know, built up in a, if you will, prototype is, I think, a great step forward. And that, with that President Thompson, those are my recognitions for this evening.
Okay. Let's move to the Shared Governance Representatives. Ms. Chapman?
Just one other item this evening and that is just to mention that our Summer Swim Program is off to a really great start this year. We do service mostly the community here around PCC. And in addition to having swim lessons from early in the morning until quite late at night, we also have rec swim, open swim, and we'll see as many as 100, 100-plus students a day, plus camps that come in and use the pool. So it's well-used, it's well-respected, and we're teaching children how to swim and water safety. So, and we have a staff of 21 again this year that runs the pool for us, so.
But it's not limited to students or to the PCC family?
It is open to the community. It is open to the community.
Excellent. Dr. Jacobs?
No, thank you.
Dr. Vanatell? Mr. Miller?
No report, thank you.
Crystal?
I do. And this never happens. I just wanted to let you know that for the summer...
Your time is up.
I knew it. For the summer, summer enrollment, summer school, which is going on now, we are 96% full, which is slightly less than we were last year. But for fall, which we have now completed about 20 days of registration, we are up in headcount, we are up in enrollments, and we are at 77% of capacity, 20 days into registration.
Fantastic.
It's going to be a busy fall.
Yeah. Dr. Douglas?
I just want to say that, she's gone so I can embarrass her. If you think Pressiato was bubbly tonight, you ought to see her in the class.
Ed?
No report this evening.
Elise?
Yes, just a few things. They, the new senators for the Classified Senate were sworn in today. They will, August 3rd, the new board members will be sworn in and working on planning the classified retreat in September.
Thank you. Simon?
Thank you, President Thompson. Ms. Jackson's rather poorly today, so I'm sitting in for her. Two items. First of all, on our own efforts of innovation and outreach, we are making progress on a new ASPCC portal, which we're hoping to then tie back into when MyPCC goes campus global, tie into that and tie into the other areas of the college to provide all students, not just with what ASPCC does, but also the other services that the campus can provide for them. And on the second item of outreach, we are planning a fact-finding mission to the Community Education Center to get a better feel for how the AS, which is a little underrepresented over at the CEC, how we can better serve them and make sure that their interests are also as protected as students here at the main campus. And that's all.
That sounds like an excellent idea. We now move to public comment on non-agenda items. We have a request to speak from Cecilia Nickerson on non-agenda items.
Good evening and thank you for hearing us. My name is Cecilia Nickerson. I was a former student of Pasadena City College.
Can you speak perhaps more directly into the microphone?
In the Culinary Arts Program. And unfortunately, I'm here with the dispute. We've written a letter. 15 students have gotten together. So the things have gone wrong, or in our opinion, okay? But let me just begin by saying that Pasadena City College, for me, a long time ago, had been a very important place to come. My sister came here and became a surgical nurse. I have a brother who went through here, went on and became a physics and calculus instructor. My brother has three Emmy Awards because he took an electrician program here. Pasadena City College stood for something at one time. And what I went through in the last year and a half has been totally unbelievable and we've gone to other channels. We talked to our dean, we spoke with our professor. We were told that if you don't like it, go somewhere else. Other deans have heard this from students who work in the offices and gone on to their jobs and spoke with their deans and they say, let us know what happened. This past February, I, I had to go into financial aid and I spoke with the financial aid counselor who told me, take it straight to the board of trustees. It's just crazy. I don't really want to read it out loud because it is sometimes sensitive issues. I did write a letter. 15 students have signed it. We'd like for you to take it into consideration.
Just hand them to Ms. Thompson right here, please. And shoulders, shoulders.
I'm sorry, I have a back injury. I fell in the classroom. I have a back injury. And I'm really upset and it's taken a long time to get here. I began this program thinking I was going to get a fresh start in life after putting my kids through college. I have a veterinarian, my daughter, an urban planner, my son, and now it was my turn. And it didn't end up the way it was supposed to. So I've given you your letter. I ask that you be in contact with us. Please take what I, we've said seriously. There's more to that, it's just that I couldn't write you three, three semesters. It's a lot more than what's even in there.
We have the letter and we're referring it to Dr. Rocha and it will be taken quite seriously and reviewed and investigated from there.
Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much then. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board of trustees on non-agenda items? Okay, next we move to approval of consent items. And Dr. Rocha, there's one you wanted to take separately, is that correct?
Yes, President Thompson. On a procedural matter, I do want to treat Item 12P separately and I would refer to General Counsel Mary Dow, who will explain the procedure here.
Members of the board, President Thompson, Dr. Rocha, when we reviewed the agenda, we realized that Item 12P and Item F before the boards tonight are duplications of each other. Item 12P represents some important personnel decisions that we're asking the board to make tonight. And on behalf of Dr. Rocha, I would like to request, Mr. Thompson, that Item 12P be pulled from the consent agenda and treated separately as the board sometimes does with consent agenda items. And then, once the board has dealt with Item 12P, Item F will be moot. And again, on behalf of the college president, I'd like to request that Item F simply be withdrawn.
Okay. We will treat it accordingly. Let's deal with consent items other than 12P. Any others to be addressed separately by anybody?
Move approval of the other consent items.
Is there a second?
Would politely, with the mover and seconds, ask for a separate vote on contract, have it listed here, in 14B, there's a contract that I wish a separate vote on or that would be to ratify Contract B97957-2 with Granicus Inc.
Okay. I'll accept that.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Curious? Okay, let's deal with...
I'll move approval of the separate contract with Granicus and the other related...
Is there a second to that?
I second it.
Contracts.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
And motion carries. Four to one with advisory vote being yes. Now, let's come to 12P then, Dr. Rocha.
Yes, thank you, President Thompson. Let me describe what I'm putting forward in front of you tonight for approval. And then, of course, I refer to you, President Thompson, and the board for your discussion and, and action. First of all, let me make some comments and notes of gratitude. What I put before you, members of the board, is a recommendation for appointments for five vice president positions, the searches for which were previously approved. Before I go any further, I do want to thank, and they're here in the room, the members of our colleagues from CCCS, Dr. Hernandez, Dr. Walker, and Dr. Conrad, who manage this process with our faculty, staff, and student representatives, the hiring committees for the positions that I'm recommending to you tonight. Most especially, who I want to thank are my colleagues, the faculty, staff, and students who served on the hiring committees for these positions. It was extraordinarily hard work, as they all found out, but we followed the process carefully, we trusted in the process. And what I have to report to you tonight are the results of near-unanimous consensus up and down the line of the search committees at the first level and the second level. And of course, my recommendation completely concurs with the first and second level committees. So with that, so that I can give you the item, as I said before, many recommendations I've made to you and, but none with a deeper sense of resolve than I made tonight. I wish to announce to you the names of the recommended appointees by position. For Vice President Administrative Services, Dr. Richard Van Pelt. Dr. Van Pelt has a PhD in Administration Management from Walden University and has served Pasadena City College since 1997. For Vice President of Educational Services, Dean Robert Miller, who is currently dean Educational Services. Bob is at the University of Laverne pursuing his doctorate and has an MBA from Cal State Northridge and has served the college for many years in several capacities and also has great experience in the private sector. For Vice President Human Resources, Dr. Benedict Lastimato. He has a doctorate in Educational Leadership from Seattle University and he is currently Assistant Vice Chancellor, Human Resources and Labor Relations, the University of California, Merced. Among his previous appointments, he was Vice Chancellor of Human Resources and Labor Relations at Grossmont Coymaca, and you can never pronounce that. We just call it Grossmont, Community College District. For Vice President of Information Technology, Mr. Dwayne Cable. Mr. Cable has his MBA from Western Carolina University and is currently Vice President of Information Technology at Joliet Junior College in Illinois. He has worked for the STRATA Group, who you are familiar with as the ones who produced our STRATA Report several years ago. He has served as Chief Technology Officer for the Ventura Community College District for Mount San Antonio College. And among his previous appointments, he served 10 years as Chief Information Officer at Morehead State College. For Vice President Student and Learning Services, Dr. Robert Bell. He has his doctorate in Educational Administration from the University of Pacific. He is currently at Antelope Valley College as Director of Extended Learning, but his longest stint was at Vice President of Student Services at nearby Chaffee College, where he also served as Chief Administrative Officer of the Chino Campus when that started up in Chaffee. President Thompson, those are my five appointments. I've put the information before you and it comes to you with my strong recommendation.
Any questions of Dr. Rocha? Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Hang on.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions?
I just want to express my admiration for the team and for the candidates that have emerged. It's something we've been talking about for quite some time, about the number of interim positions that we've had. And first off, it's a testament to the folks who have been serving in the interim positions that the college has continued to do so well for so long. And then to attract individuals of the caliber that I, I've been able to review for, that are being presented before us today, is a testament, not only to the work of the folks who have been in those positions, who have tracked such high-level people, but then a testament to Dr. Rocha's leadership. And I'm excited about getting a leadership team that will continue to help PCC move forward.
Other comments or anything? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Yes, I'd like to offer a thanks too to... Yes, I'd like to offer a thanks, too, to the people who serve on the various committees that worked quite hard to come forward with the recommendations. It's a good, diverse group of people, representing the different parts of the college, and it's great to see that happening, everybody working together and coming to consensus results, if not unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Thompson. And could we just congratulate Rick and Bob?
Yes.
Again, thank the Board for its support, and I also want to thank all of my colleagues on the Executive Committee, especially Crystal, especially Elaine, and all the colleagues who have served in this year and who will continue to serve. We have great work to do, a lot of work to do in the coming years under this new leadership, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Great. Well said. The next item on the agenda is the informative issue, Annual Public Records Request Report. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, and this is your item G on the agenda and in the book, okay? And I'll just make, you have a written report here, and I'll just make a brief comment, and then I may ask General Counsel Dow to elaborate. This is, if you will, the first annual Public Records Act Request Report. This is every public records request received by the Office of the Superintendent President during the year 1011, the year that started last July 1st. It is the current practice, and we will work to codify this as we move forward, it is the current practice in the college, administrative practice, that when we receive a public records request from anyone, to anyone in the college, that that request is then referred to the Office of the President. The Office of the President logs the request and gives it to, refers it to, General Counsel for its review and response, formal response to the requister. This has been done in each one of these cases, and you see the report in front of you. There may have been, may have been, you know, since this is the first year of this, one or two requests that may have, you know, while we were setting this up, not appear here, although I'm not aware of any. So, I put this as an informative and a comprehensive record. General Counsel?
There isn't very much that I can add to this, Dr. Rocha. This is a report that Dr. Rocha asked our office to prepare for him. He has accurately described what has been his practice since he became president at the college, in an effort to make sure that Public Records Act requests, which do come in to various different offices, are all routed to a single office for response, so that we can be sure they are responded to in a timely fashion. Dr. Rocha had a concern that sometimes they were slipping through the cracks because they just, people didn't know what to do with them. And persons who are making a request sometimes send them where they think they should go, rather than to the President's office. Because these requests and a failure to respond timely can have legal ramifications, they can be quite serious. He asked us to assist him with this, in making sure, and I think it is a legacy to the late Professor McKee, that the college has always been very careful about these sorts of things. And so we have been working with him, and we will continue to do so and to assist the college in this fashion until you employ an in-house General Counsel, who I believe then will probably be responsible for that task.
Are there questions of anybody? Mr. Baum?
I just want to express my appreciation, that this is a demonstration of this institution's commitment to transparency and to fulfilling all the requirements, and that there's nothing to hide, that any requests that we've received, we now can document that we've received it and how we've met that request, and that that's the institution's commitment going forward as well.
And I might add, Trustee Baum, that this report will go out over my signature to California Aware and the three or four major watchdog groups in the state. We were given an A- last year by California Aware, and we're going for an A. And I want to make clear on the record that I know that I express the absolute view of the Board, that we welcome public records requests from anyone at any time. And so we wanted to present this to you today, and we will continue to do this on a annual basis.
Ms. Waugh?
I just want to thank Dr. Rocha also for providing this, and I think it speaks to our efforts to be as transparent as possible and as responsive. So, the other question that I have is, will we be getting this kind of report either on a monthly basis as requests come in, so that we...
Ms. Waugh, I want to suggest that Dr. Rocha's provided this annualized report, which is probably as often as you want to see it.
Unless there was something that impinged on some kind of policy issue, you know, then it would be, you know, operational in nature.
Right.
But of course, you know, in the normal course of business, as we prepare for board meetings, most of the public records requests are clear enough. We just wanted to, and of course, at any time, you can request your own public record and, you know, ask to see what's going on with the public records requests in the office. But we wanted to make sure that for the first time, we laid down a report that we are obliged to give to the public, so voluntarily, because this is not a requirement.
No, this is not a requirement.
This is not a requirement, this is a voluntary report.
Right, I just wanted to say that on an ongoing basis, I know that we get notification when a request comes in, but it's, I think it's a good practice to track that we are also responding in a timely manner.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Other questions or comments? Okay, this is information only, let's move into item H, Pasadena City College 2010-2011 Course and Enrollment Trends Report, also information item.
Yes, Nadi, I will introduce Dean Colross. This is, I won't make a long preamble, but I would say, first of all, to thank Dean Colross and her staff for preparing this report. It's an extremely important report, and again, I wanted to establish, if we hadn't already done so, the precedent that every year at this time, we would produce this. So without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Crystal.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. It's behind tab H in your folders, if you haven't located, and what Dr. Rocha actually asked us to do was to look at basically the report put out by Chancellor Scott on the state of the union of the community colleges in California, and do a micro look at how PCC was doing on those exact same measures. So as you can see, what we did in the first page, in the first six tables, we kind of tried to mirror the questions put forward in the letter from Chancellor Scott that addresses some issues regarding transfer sections, non-credit sections, and then following that, we actually went table for table and matched the Chancellor's office report on the community college as a whole, and how we at PCC compared to that. And as you can see, on almost every single table, we look really very good. We're an outstanding institution that's doing quite well. I also tried to provide you with some commentary along the side, you'll see where I tried to pull out some things you might find of interest. And although I know I could walk you through this table by table, I would bore you to death, so I thought maybe I'd take any questions you might have about the information provided.
It's an excellent report, and very, very thorough, and I think exceptionally well done, so thank you very much for an excellent job and a lot of hard work. Mr. Martin?
I am just elated with the report, first to Crystal and team, for the succinctness of it, sometimes referred to as a dashboard, it lets you look across and see retention, success. Of particular interest to me is the number of classes. I'm always saying, I want to save every dollar we can, so that we can offer another class section, and was excited to see that between fall 2009 and fall 2010, despite budget cutbacks, despite the fact that every other community college in the state has dramatically been cutting courses, we actually offered 20 additional sections between '09 and '10. And in light of the amount of budget difference that we have in those years, that's a phenomenal, a phenomenal figure, that just really jumped out at me, and it actually, and even our non-credit sections went up. So, I was thrilled with the succinctness, I think I appreciated seeing the different curricular areas. I did ask, pre-meeting, for one other additional statistic that I think people might find interesting. And there's a lot of different definitions of success, but for me, maybe the simplest one is if a student completes a course, that's a success. And it just, we're here so a student can complete a course, learn some information, and get where they want to get as efficiently and as effectively and fast as they possibly can. And I asked and was told that in our '09-'10 year, we had 131,182 successful course completions. And that's a tremendous, tremendous number, in my opinion. And the icing on the cake is, a number that I like to track, is how much money does it cost to create one of those successful course completions? And in the last three years, it's taken over $1,000 to generate one successful course completion, but this year, it took only $921. So not only were there 131,000 successful completions, but we did it more efficiently than we've ever done it before. So, I think that's a strong testimony, I think that is a glowing testimony to this institution, to Dr. Rocha, and to every teacher that's just letting two more guys slip in the back, and all the people that are working for those retention rates, and counselors that are in there trying to get people into the right classes. Hey, it all comes out here and says, "Well done."
Thank you. Mr. Baum?
I just want to echo some of what Mr. Martin had to say, and we had this report presented to us at the Board of Governors last week, and it was in the back of my mind, how does PCC compare? And if I wanted to draw our attention to Table 8 in both reports, it's on the third page of the PCC report, and then the page 6 of the other report, and you can see the difference between the management of the resources at PCC by the leadership and the deans. I give a lot of credit to the deans for finding ways to make this happen, and Dave, if you could pass that along to your colleagues, too. But you'll see the course offerings, as John said, we had 20 more course offerings at PCC than we did the previous year. If you go to the state, and there was a percent, there was a drop of 4.1%, statewide, so we were up almost a percent, the rest of the state averaged a 4.1% drop. The number of credit sections, statewide, there was a cut of almost 3%, we actually increased. The non-credit section, there was a cut of 19% of courses statewide. PCC, there's actually a small increase, a 4% increase. Transferable sections, the bread and butter of what students are looking for, statewide, there was more than a 2% cut. We held our cut to less than a percent. In the non-transferable sections, there was an 8% cut across the state, we had a small increase in 4.2%. We're able to offer more basic skills and meet the needs of our students, almost 7% of an increase in those courses. The state had almost a 5% drop in basic skills section offerings. And just up and down the line, and it's a testament to the prudent management of this institution, and everybody working together, and I'm looking forward to seeing how fall of '11 is going to look compared to fall '10, now given all the additional challenges we're getting from Sacramento. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Waugh?
I wanted to thank Dean Colross for this, and she's always been great providing the information that we need for the community. So this is a nice, it's a great snapshot of what we're doing and the progress we're making. I did have some questions that I had posed to Dr. Rocha before the meeting on Table 10B, and so I was a little surprised to see the negative changes, percentage changes in areas such as nursing, radiology, and the construction craft technology. And I think that what this kind of information also provides for us is not only our successes, but also information for us to look at our curriculum and how we closely correlate it with what's happening in the job, and I hope that it's a way for us to make sure that we're connected to the community and to the industry, so that we have a curriculum that's meaningful to what's out there in the job field.
Other questions or comments? Okay, information only, thank you very, very much for an exceptionally well-done job. We really appreciate that, and certainly speaks well for Pasadena City College. Thank you. All right, let's now move to item I on the agenda, the redistricting report, again, information only. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, thank you, President Thompson. Well, now that you have griddled Dean Colross for her enrollment report, I give you an opportunity to really go over the redistricting report. I'm very, very grateful, at my request, that I asked Crystal to prepare a comprehensive report on redistricting, something that the district has a responsibility to do. So, I wanted to accomplish two things, and I wanted to make clear that this is not an action, but simply a discussion item and an informative, but it also, more or less, gives you the shape of my thinking and the staff's thinking as we move the conversation forward. Basically, Crystal will describe the redistricting process. Long story short, there are, we have to do it, there are a couple of options to do it that are described here. Basically, the options are, you know, we do it ourselves, or we hire an expert consultant in the field to do it for us. So, we wanted, without having any kind of necessity to move to action, we wanted to put all the information in front of the Board, so that if it had any questions or any guidance, that we could have that. And then, of course, General Counsel Dow is here to make sure that we have any legal information. And all this, of course, comes out of the 2010 census. So with that, I'll give it back to Crystal.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. What I tried to put together for you here was a background of not only what redistricting actually is, and why we have to go through the process, but also a little information about how we handled it the last two times, which even I found very fascinating. In '91, as you read in here, we actually did contract it out, in 2001, we chose to do it in-house. At that time, we had staff in-house that was capable of doing this and did a very good job. One of the good things about our district is that we have areas within the district, and from what, and I really didn't know anything about redistricting until I started to read about this, that that is actually very fortunate for us, we are very fortunate to have that. Even though we have to go through the process, it is not as contentious a process if we did not have areas within the district. There are legal requirements for us to look at, we do need to look at population shifts, there have been population shifts within our district, so we will need to take into account, as I stated here, the size of each area needs to be very close, less than 10% differentiation. We also have to look at the impact on what they call special populations. So we will have a lot to look at in the redistricting, because they're having shifts, demographic shifts, that we will have to pay attention to. We don't want to disenfranchise anyone in the board elections. I did propose two things, one, I gave you two proposals from two contract companies. One was the one that did it for us in '91, and the other is from the Community College League of California. And I'm not sure if they have done this in the past, but they put together a very nice package for districts to look at, and it seems to be quite comprehensive. And also, compared to the other company, they do in-person visits to you, which I think is a little more personal than doing conference calls. We could do it in-house, and as I stated, we would be willing to learn how to do it in-house. We did train a senior research analyst to do this two years ago, sent her away to a school for a week, and then, of course, she left, so, dang it. So right now, we don't personally have the expertise in my office to do this. If you chose to have us do it in-house, we would certainly get the expertise to do it. And I'm going to ask Mary Dow to comment on this now, because she and I talked about this briefly earlier.
Again, members of the Board, Mr. Thompson, Dr. Rocha, Ms. Colross is, of course, is correct. Ms. Colaross, of course, is correct that because the census data has now been released, all agencies in California that have locally elected boards, such as yours, have to examine whether or not that census data requires them to redistrict, and if so, in what way. She's also correct that Pasadena City College is one of the few community college districts in the state already divided up into wards or voter areas with trustees required to live in those wards. So you are so far ahead of so many of my clients who are still struggling with the initial difficult question, are we going to go from elections at large to elections by ward? But you do still have to examine the data and realign your boundaries. And I think that the options that Crystal has described are not unlike the options that the California Legislature struggled with. Should the legislature itself and its staff do the redistricting, or should it be done by an outside panel? I can't speak to the ability of the district to do it in-house. Crystal does a fabulous job, and I'm sure she and her staff could do a fabulous job. But I think in terms not only of an appearance of integrity and neutrality, as well as transparency, it would be my recommendation for the board to get the assistance of a consultant who would make a recommendation to you, so that there could be no question that there was no taint of any kind. I am familiar with the proposal that the Community College League has been, is making, because one of the things that they did this year was they looked for a consultant that they had confidence in and that they could then partner with. And with an economy of scale, make then the service available to community colleges. And one of the things that I like about the consultant that they're working with is that the consultant is working with community colleges around the state. When I looked at the other consultant, they do an enormous amount of redistricting work, clearly very skilled, very capable at it. But I don't think they've done a lot of community colleges. And I like the idea of an entity that is familiar with community colleges. It's also a proposal that is comprehensive. I'm sorry to tell you, but the one thing that they don't provide you is legal guidance. And that's appropriate. You know, you should be getting attorney-client recommendations from your own lawyer. And I and my firm are capable of providing that component of it, and the league will be able to do all of the rest. But I think it is certainly time for the board to be having this conversation. You have to get your final proposed realignments to the county by February. Time is going by, and I think that it is a decision the board will be called upon to make at the next meeting or the meeting thereafter. If any of the board members have any questions for me about redistricting or the redistricting process, please feel free to ask.
It's not an action item this evening, but we'll probably have it back on the agenda for our August 3 meeting, ideally to take action at that time. Questions, Mr. Martin?
Well, I have a question and comment. I've served on the subcommittee of at least two prior redistricts for PCC, and we didn't really have a subcommittee last time because it was all handled in-house, so there wasn't any need for any special subcommittee of the board to do anything in particular. I, at the time that, there was a time when we redistrict that we tried to find a way so that when we were challenged, or not challenged, but when we were required to redistrict in the future, a large part of the mechanism would have an underpinning that made sense, that made future redistricts, future redistricting easier to do. So we had a discussion as a board, and I'm not sure if it was last time or the time before, and basically established trustee areas as much as possible in line with our K-12 feeder high school districts. So our trustee areas are actually based, to a certain extent, on feeder or other already established electoral bodies. This last trustee convention that many of us attended to support Dr. Mann, one of the main conference themes centered on redistricting, and I attended those conference themes. And there were gentlemen from different demographic companies there, reporting and explaining things to trustees. And as any good marketing person, they came in extremely well-prepared. So as soon as you sat down and you said, "Yeah, I'm from Pasadena," they whipped out the Pasadena demographics and started talking to you all about Pasadena. And the one gentleman who will remain nameless actually attended a class at PCC at one time and had a very nice conversation with one of the professionals who relayed the following comments. First and foremost, the fact that we're in trustee areas to begin with is the elephant in the room. That's the real big thrust, is you're supposed to be in trustee areas. We've been there a long time. Secondly, the fact that our trustee areas are based on other already established governmental agencies like K-12s is even further testimony to the fact that there's, the trustee areas have been established under what would be a reasonable assumption. Thirdly, he, and I guess he, because he's a local, knows all this, said that the history of voting in the Pasadena area is such that it supports the fact that there's not a lot of ethnic divisibility in the voting. In other words, there's cross-voting between ethnics in many of the elections that occur within our geographical area, which is already another testimony to our redistricting that we've done in the past. And so he basically said to us, "Your redistricting at PCC really should be, unless there's, you know, huge demographic shifts between trustee areas or some major cataclysmic thing that, you know, just looking at the little table in the report, we don't know, because it's not divided by trustee area, it really should be a very simple, straightforward, and relatively, in my mind, low-cost operation to be able to do that." And we won't know that till some professional looks at real data. The final enlightenment on this is, is when we previously established the trustee areas, we actually did try to create them in a way that there were kind of DMZ zones between trustee areas, so that when future redistricting was necessary, assuming there wasn't major cataclysmic changes, those DMZ zones could move two or three streets up, or two or three streets down, or over, or left, and be able to absorb differences to get us within an appropriate balance. For example, if you look at where Tony Fellow's number is all in the Arcadia Unified School District, and where that meets the Pasadena Unified is one of those such buffer zones, and there's a strip along Mitchell Linda, which is kind of a county area that is kind of the absorption zone, so it's kind of semi-Arcadia, semi-PUSD, and we use that as like one of those kind of buffers. It was built that way in our previous redistrictings intentionally, so that it could mitigate those kinds of changes. And there's several of those kinds of lines around. I'm trying to give you, whoever does it, I'm comfortable if we do it in-house, but apparently that might even be more costly than going out to a professional in light of our current structure. I'm comfortable with Dr. Rocha and the recommendation as to, you know, we certainly want to be transparent. We certainly want to be open to if there were major changes, maybe all our past work goes out the window. But based on what this professional, who seemed to be well-prepared in advance, trying to get our contract, said to me, was this should be a fairly simple, straightforward process for us based on the history of what we've done. I'm sorry it took a little long, but I thought somebody has to interject the historical.
Well, it's very helpful. I appreciate you doing that. First, Mary Dow, and then Mr. Baum.
I think that, I mean, the historical perspective is really helpful to me. Because I haven't, I didn't assist the district with it in 2001, or 1991, or 1981 at all. One of the intervening facts that's of interest, at least to lawyers, and you probably heard this at the conference, is that between 2001 and 2011, the California Voting Rights Act was enacted and was upheld by the courts. And that pretty much assures there's going to be a lot of scrutiny of this process around the state, because we're now not just dealing with the Federal Voting Rights Act, but with a state act that was specifically enacted to assure that local government in California honored the principle of the one person, one vote, and to make sure that no identifiable groups are in any way disenfranchised. I will speculate that what you heard from the consultant is probably true, and I would be surprised if there were any dramatic changes in the boundaries. But I think that, particularly because this law has been enacted and upheld by the California Supreme Court in the intervening decade, that it's going to be important for all my clients, and fortunately, you're just already three-quarters of the way there, to do this honestly with integrity and transparency, so that frankly, you know, it's clear that despite these new legal requirements, that the district is taking it seriously.
Yeah, I agree. That's really important, and I appreciate Mary. So maybe the best way is, in light of the, you know, the staff change and what we've lost, that we go through the process.
Mr. Baum?
And I'm not presupposing anything. I just want an informational question. So assuming we move forward with the staff recommendation at a subsequent meeting, what can you articulate what the process is, the timeline, when there'll be an opportunity for public engagement, that type of thing?
What the league told me when I asked them about the proposal, they said that their timeline for this is three board meetings.
But I'm saying, I'd like to have the staff present a proposal saying, "Okay, in the month of September, we're going to do this, and in October, we're going to do this," and then.
It's actually in the report.
So walk me through that again.
Sure.
Walk, for others who haven't seen that, if you could do that.
If you turn to page four or five of the report, I've walked you through the timeline.
Okay, so.
So, of course, the first thing was to actually have the census data released, and then have it verified by the Department of Finance in the state of California. I'm not really sure what that's about, but they have to do that before we can actually use the data.
That's correct.
Yeah, I got one right. And then June was when you can start, the preliminary actually maps were released, and you can actually look at those online. Some companies have some out there. So our hope is that we submit to you in July the proposal. I got that part done right. And then.
We won't be able to act on it.
Until August.
Okay.
So after you would approve it, whichever way you go, then we would start the timeline. I'm looking at the in-house, or the out, the proposed in-house redistricting. The outsourcing actually is a shorter timeline.
And what is our, when you, what is our process or proposed mechanism for receiving public comment?
I believe they actually do it at a board meeting. They actually ask for it at an open board meeting. That was my understanding.
Are we going to announce to the public?
Yes.
That we've, I mean, besides a board meeting, because we have two dozen people here, are we going to make a public announcement?
Yes. And actually, what the league told me is that they handle all of that for us. They make all the announcements, they do all, they'll work with my office, but they take care of all of that.
Okay. I want to confirm that, because we've had consultants say that they're going to do public outreach or public awareness that haven't delivered on that. So I want to make sure we, if that's part of the proposal, we understand what that actually means.
Well, as we, as we prepare the agenda item for next time, we will also prepare, of course, the proposed, go through a selection process, and prepare the proposed consultant. And we will do everything in our power. In fact, I would almost insist that the consultant appear at the meeting, just like when we did PARs or when we did CCCS, the searches, that whoever, you know, staff and I prepare for recommendation, that we'll have that person here for us to query, and that person will make a detailed presentation along the lines you're talking about.
And lastly, if we have principals to articulate a philosophy about an approach like Mr. Martin articulated about, is it important to us that feeder school districts are retained in the trustee areas? When would that, when would we actually be able to kind of reach a consensus on that kind of direction?
That, I'm not sure. You mean, in terms of, am I hearing you, Trustee Baum, that when?
We retain a firm, and then we want to say a philosophy, as you approach the drawing of the district lines, traditionally, we have, if the other board members agree, that's a good approach, that's something we want to insert into the map drawing of the maps, so that somebody has a sense of what direction to take.
Let's turn to Ms. Dow, on that. My suspicion is that you can use that as general guiding principle, but ultimately, when the district lines are recommended, they have to take into consideration a number of other factors as well.
Yeah. I do have to caution that the criteria that are set out in the California Voting Rights Act include, although they include various community interests, they primarily focus on assuring that discreet minority communities are able to have a full opportunity to elect members to the, whatever the legislative body is. In the proposal that Ms. Colaross has presented to you, and it's page 8 of 13 of the material that she prepared, there's a description of the league's approach. And I'm not, I mean, that's just the one I'm familiar with, so I'm kind of, and that is the one that your staff and I both like, so I'm focusing on that. And you see there in the middle of the page, there's a provision where it talks about how it works. And the program begins with an in-depth analysis of the current district population and shifts. And there would be a public hearing in which members of the public can provide input about where communities of interest are. And I think that would be, at the very least, an opportunity publicly to talk about what communities of interest, other than those that are legally protected by the Voting Rights Act, exist in the district, and the importance to the members of the board and to the, and to the community, that because this is an educational entity, as opposed to some other kind of municipal entity. And again, this is one of the reasons why I like you working with a consultant who's familiar with educational entities, and is going to understand that, that where you talk about that the discreet school districts that feed into the district are a community of interest that needs to be honored and respected, so that they understand as they look at whether your lines need to be adjusted at all, and especially if they need to move any farther than those buffer zones that Mr. Martin described, that they understand they shouldn't suddenly slash across the Arcadia School District in an effort to equalize the district unless there's no other way to do it. And I, there have been population shifts in the district. It has not been static. And so they're going to make some recommendations to you. I really do believe that. And that's another reason why I think that a consultant will be of assistance to you. But there will be these opportunities. The timeline that Crystal has described for you shows that you're going to have redistricting proposals presented to the board. There will be a public hearing on it. I hear you that, you know, we need to be sure that all constituencies in the community are aware when you're having meetings. And you may even want to suggest some sub-hearings out in the various seven trustee areas, so that members in the area have an opportunity. Those are things that you could talk to the consultants about doing. And then there will be opportunities for public comment before a final redistricting plan is submitted to you for approval.
I assume we want to. We could also put together our own committee to work with the consultants to assist them.
They specifically indicate that, you know, one option is for there to be a subcommittee of the board, that they would be.
I was thinking more of a community-type subcommittee.
Oh, sure.
To work with the consultants, if we go that direction.
Yeah. My experience of them so far is that they're, they know they need to personalize these to the areas, districts.
Other questions or comments? It's information only, so it'll be back on our August 3 agenda for action. Is that the plan, Dr. Rocha?
Yes, indeed, President Thompson.
Okay. The next item we have on the agenda is future board meeting dates. Wednesday, August 3. I think we want to talk just briefly about the time to start those. We closed section of 5, regular business meeting starting at 6. I know Mr. Baum has raised an issue about that, and perhaps we can, if it's convenient, we're going to. with everybody else or acceptable to other Board members, we can go back to a 6 o'clock closed session and a 7 o'clock regular business meeting. Does that work better for Mr. Baum, I think?
Well, that's what we set in our organizational meeting in December, so. And also for me personally, it's, it would be easier to get here.
Any problem in changing it to 6 o'clock for the closed session and 7 for the open? We went back to the earlier times because we had really packed agendas and we wanted to get more time to deliberate on things. So we'll change the times of that. We had some emails from CEC students that wanted to address this. I don't know if they've appeared.
I think this was related to the CEC.
Well, that's one, but there were other emails that were, anybody here from?
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Oh, yes, okay.
I did meet with some students earlier today and I know they were here in the audience earlier. They have since left and they will be, and I know I've spoken to Dr. Rocha about this, meeting with them at some point to hear their concerns and be able to address them.
Good. All right. Excellent, then.
I did want to express my appreciation to Alex for, we have our usual prep meeting on Wednesdays and Dean Thayer was there. He conveyed to me the, more specifically, the student concerns. So I think the next step is that we're going to work to take an administrative meeting. Staff and I will go over to CEC next week and then meet with the concerned students and report back.
And just to be clear, I'll be getting their information, their contact info when they're available. That way we can set up that meeting.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Dr. Rocha, is it your expectation we will not have a second meeting in August, business meeting in August?
That has been our practice, that we would not have the second meeting in August. And so I'm.
If you decide to change your practice, I'm probably going to be out of area during that meeting.
I may be out of area.
You're going to be out of area and Tony's out of the area. So if you decide to change that practice, there may not be a quorum.
Just wanted to make that very clear. We still have to find a date for retreat meeting. We were hoping to find a Friday or a Saturday sometime in August. I'm remiss probably in not sending out an email asking for people to give us time. I think August may be not a very good month to try to pull all of us together for a retreat.
We're thinking at this point, and this is not a, you know, anything but a save the date, but the, it looks like the best time would be so far, the first Saturday in September after Labor Day weekend.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Anything else, any future agenda items, Mr. Baum?
I had a request for a review of the extended learning programs that we offer at PCC and then also a review of policies related to the student activities fee.
All right. I'll have Vice President Miller prepare the report for you. And so we, I'm not sure, well, let's see if we can get that on for, you know, August 3.
For the student activity fee or the extended?
Oh, I'm sorry. And I blanked out for a minute. We will have the student activity fee proposal and procedures for your review for the August 3 meeting.
For possible action, too.
For possible action. And, you know, and I want to report that again, Alex and Dean Thayer met today and had an extensive meeting, been working on this for a couple of weeks. They've done great work. And so I think the procedures proposal that we'll be bringing to you will be fully responsive.
And then in extended learning, I just want to make sure that we're all in alignment on what is the role and purpose of extended learning? Revenue generation, service to the community, that type of thing, so that we can understand how that program is being led, ran in.
And what we might do, depending on the timing, Dean Chapman and I will be working on this. We might give you kind of a two-phase report. First phase, status of things right now and give us a few weeks to a month after that and come back with the plan to build it out from a revenue enhancement perspective, if that's acceptable to the Board.
Other future agenda items? Mr. Martin?
I'm interested in a report, and I'm actually, in my mind, I see it graphically, of classroom utilization by day and time. And I could be flexible here, but I was just viewing your traditional calendar. There's seven or six columns or five columns, Monday through Friday or Saturday, and kind of an hour by hour with a certain percent of the classrooms that are used at 8 o'clock on a Monday versus 4 o'clock on a Tuesday or 6 o'clock on a Wednesday or whatever that is. And that would be of interest to me or something, that's the way I see it, but maybe there's something similar that you already do that's simpler. So if the Board would let me have a first pass at that on a meeting to see if we can get some staff time, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
We welcome that.
Other future agenda items? Not, I think we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
No, I'm so done. You guys are on your own.